Thirty seconds.
There, he's strict.
Not yet.
Sure you get the chair.
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of March 4th, 2024 was included and published in the Curry News and Star Legend and placed on the borough's website. Notice of this meeting was on the bulletin board as well at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher is excused this evening. Council members Theresa Bonner.
Here.
Glenn Dennehy.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vermaat.
Here. Please, let's see here, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four will be moved to next meeting. Item number five, we have our department reports and notices as listed. People always ask, I'll point to letter A for a moment, people ask, when do I move my cars off the street in the event of snow? Normally that is two inches is when the plows go out. So if you're curious of when to move your vehicle, two inches of snow is a good reminder to go ahead and do that. And then all of the lots are available for parking. So if you don't have a driveway, you can move your car to one of the borough lots. And then as a reminder, St. Patrick's Day Parade is this Sunday. Kickoff's at 1:30 and again, parking restrictions are in effect at 9:30 a.m. So make sure we move our cars if they're on Main Street. We're all, everyone's looking forward to a fantastic, another fantastic parade here in Somerville. So we're going to move to our committee reports. Start to my right, Theresa.
Thank you. So the Municipal Alliance and Youth Services Commissions met on February 8th. The Somerville Middle School is gearing up for Challenge Day on April 24th. That is the day for eighth graders to participate in a day-long program that helps combat loneliness and create connections across lines of differences. Lunch will be provided by the Somerville Youth Services Commission. The next meeting will be held on March 14th at 7:00 p.m. It is open to the public via virtual meeting link if you're interested in attending. And personnel, we are still interviewing candidates to fill a couple of positions in the borough. If you are interested in, or if you're job searching, go to SomervilleNJ.org and tap on jobs to see all the listings currently available. That's it.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you. Our borough was chosen as one of the top eight most hospitable small towns in the mid-Atlantic by World Atlas. Our town was noted for its calm and quiet atmosphere, making Somerville a great escape from the city. Also noted for its diversity of great restaurants. So I want to congratulate all of our residents, our business community, and everyone for this great achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Last week, we had another training course for the employees here in town. We learned about how to protect the town from frivolous lawsuits that are brought about by people who come looking for gaps in our security and poking their nose in where it doesn't belong and then claiming to be mistreated. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Tom. Gina?
The Somerville Rescue Squad responded to 132 calls in February and they had one CPR save. The Board of Health meets March 20th. The public is invited. It's Warren Street at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Glenn?
So our environmental commission will meet next Tuesday. You're all invited right here at 7:30. But we also do want to remind you that coming up on April 20th, that Saturday, to celebrate Earth Day, we will do our traditional cleanup where we will meet at the Somerville High School parking lot. And then we have an expanded green fair that we're very excited to be hosting on Division Street from 11 to 2 on that same day. So stay tuned for more details.
Thank you. With our recreation, registration is now open for youth tennis lessons and adult pickleball lessons. Tennis lessons will be held on Monday or Wednesday afternoons, grades K through 2, 3 through 5, and 6 through 8. Pickleball will be held on Sundays or Tuesdays for beginner/advanced beginners and Thursday nights for intermediate and advanced players. Don't delay, register today as space is limited. You can register at register.communitypass.net/summerville. Registration is also now open for the NJ Santos Rush Spring Soccer Clinic and Games, which is open for students ages 4 through 7. Somerville Rec is partnering with NJ Santos Rush to provide development academy-style soccer training. Kids will develop foot skills, ball control, and a love of the game through technical drill and games. Players will leave each week having built on the skills they learned during the previous sessions to create a lasting skill set. They will be held on Saturdays from April 13th through May 18th from 9 to 10 a.m. at the Carroll Pager Sports Complex. Registration is $66 for the six weeks and includes a tee shirt. Again, registrations will be accepted from March 1st through April 8th and you can also, again, register at register.communitypass.net/summerville. Checks can be made payable to Somerville Recreation and can be mailed to 25 West End Avenue, Attention Recreation. And if you have any questions, you can call 908-704-6985 or email kgrunt@somervillenj.org. And that's all I have.
Roger, I think also the recreation department's promoting for the rescue squad, the rescue squad's holding Easter egg hunt on March 18th and it's at 11 o'clock at Lep Park, right opposite the rescue squad building, so.
Yes, definitely want to check out the annual Easter egg hunt.
Yes, and the children will also be able to go through the ambulances and rescue trucks.
Which is always fun. Children of all ages, we should be reminded because I know there's a lot of folks who like to check all out at the new apparatus as much as possible. All right, tonight on the agenda, item number seven is a continuation of the mayor's programs to bring to light some of the different things that we do here in the borough. Tonight's discussion item is payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as pilots. So Mr. Driver, if you would please join us and present what is a pilot?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. First and I'll do my best. Colin, just make sure your microphone's on over here. It's on there. It's stuck to the table. Hey, with me, folks, we just got this working. You don't want to be seeing me. You ready? I'm ready. Well, it worked. All right. What you see in the screen in front of you and hopefully up there is a representation of the almighty dollar. In 2023's budget, the school system got 57, nearly 58% of that dollar. The town got nearly 30% and the county got 12.3%. The myth about the dollar and that distribution is a bit like a balance sheet. The percentages apply the day the budget is struck. After that, it can change. When it comes to the school portion, the school budget is presented to the town. And if the town includes it, adopts it, and puts it into the budget, that is the amount of money that has to be paid regardless of what the borough's finances are. So the myth about every dollar coming into town, the school gets a share, they really don't. They only get a portion of the dollars. And the other interesting thing with municipal budgets is that if we get more than the finance people anticipate, we can't use it. It goes into surplus and can only be used in the following year. So having said that, why is a pilot different to property taxes? And I'm moving through this quickly, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. A pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, therefore it's not considered a tax by the government. So it serves a couple of purposes there. It doesn't affect state aid is the first thing. The second thing is that it helps support the budget in an alternative way because it's, the pilot revenue still goes into the general fund. So that it provides money as long as we've anticipated it, and I'll show you what we anticipate for this year shortly. That money is available for works in and around the borough. While the statute says it should be used for redevelopment, it can be used for other things as well. The benefit to the town is it provides a long-term, stable flow of cash that, pardon me, that can be anticipated and strategic plans can be then addressed. Pilots start when a CO is issued. So the property tax burden to everybody who pays both commercial and residential tax is that if you've got a healthy pilot program, your taxes don't go up as much because they're being offset by the income stream of the pilot. I just lost my total train of thought, I apologize. The other portion of property tax is the land tax that you all pay. When you get a tax bill, you get improvements, you get land and county and whatever. With a pilot, the person who owns the property still pays the land tax portion so that they're not getting a break on paying tax. It's split into two different elements, one being the payment in lieu of and the other being the land tax. So the revenue stream continues. There's, I think this slide said there's only two types of taxes, but there is actually three. Or have I got in front of myself? I'm not even, no. Okay, I've got in front of myself, I apologize. The pilot's designed to incentivize a builder to go to our town, not the next town across. And we've been relatively successful in doing that. The state set up the pilots to, one, encourage developers to go into neglected or challenged communities. And we've used that very well to get stuff done and get development growing and to encourage economic development in the town. We always use what's known as the but-for test. And that but-for test is really simple, but applying it is not as simple as it sounds. But for offering a pilot, will they build the project? And we have to satisfy ourselves that the answer is no. Because if the answer is yes, they'll still come and build it, why would we need to give them a pilot? A pilot is designed to help them absorb the costs of environmental remediation and infrastructure. So just to recap before I get into the numbers, it offers an identifier cash flow to the town. The owner cannot make a tax appeal. They can't come and say, well, I don't like that pilot, I want to appeal it. Doesn't work that way. They sign an agreement with us. The three types of pilots are 2% of construction costs, which typically is used if you're building a factory or where there's, you know, we can't measure revenue, it's owner-occupied. Pardon me, the one that we do use is a percentage of revenue. Because most of the structures that we've built are rental apartments or they've got rental apartments and they have retail underneath. That's an identifiable cash flow which they have to show us each year. They've got to give us an audited income statement. And that's how we then develop the next year's payment. And most of our pilots are graduated. In the first five years typically, we allow 10% of annual gross revenue, then it goes up and probably by year 15, 16, it's at 15%, which is the maximum we can charge by law. The last pilot program, the third, is one that's applied to fee simple housing, for instance, Pulte. Seeing how their owner occupied, you can't charge them a percentage of their income because there is none. So we enter into a shorter pilot duration and it's a percentage of what the taxes would normally be, which puts an onus not just on our financial group, but also on the tax assessor, that he's got to tell us each year what the taxes would be, both improvements and land, so that calculation can be made. So in November of last year, our financial consultants begin preparing for this year. And so what you see here is a table that says, this is what we are receiving this year in estimated payment in lieu of taxes. And at the bottom there, we've put in the land tax share. So if you go back to the land, the land tax being a portion of the total tax budget. So this year, our budget, your budget shows that we'll be getting four and a quarter million dollars in revenue. Where if every one of those projects, every one of these was just built and paying regular taxes, the borough's share of their tax bill would be a little under 50% of that. So that's, that's a good example of showing you where the financial benefit to the town is. And we manage that very closely. If I could manage this just as closely, it'd be really good. Your computer's going berserk here. Okay. Yeah, well, it just stopped working. Okay, this is a chart that showed long-term impact of a pilot versus taxes. And hopefully you can see it pretty well. The left-hand column is regular taxes. And this was prepared by Phoenix Advisors. They were asked to do a what-if exercise on pilots and what it would be if we just got regular taxes. So the first column shows that taxes this year, I mean, total would be $7 million. The borough's share of that would be that $2 million that I previously showed you. And then that, that little column there that says years is the duration of each of the pilots. And so over the duration of all those pilots, the borough income would be 46 and a quarter million dollars. It's a lot of money. When you look at the net pilot revenue over the same timeframe, it's $125 million, which is a significant change to the borough. So, and then when you add the land tax into the pilot payments, you're getting $121 million more over that timeframe than you would if they were just paying regular taxes. So I think that's probably the simplest explanation that I could give you. So the, I'm heading towards the close now. We can use other sources of income to help fund the budget, which is what the pilots do. And I think the illustration I just showed, you know, there's this significant contribution to the borough, allowing the borough to do other things without impacting the pocket of the taxpayer. It stabilizes or helps to stabilize taxes over the long term. The school budget is funded without having to go into debt or finding another source of revenue, which typically is, let's raise the taxes and we'll cover the school budget that way. The schools still can receive their state aid because their state aid is based on property tax and the pilot is not taken into account. The, the one we never talk about is what does the pilot program, other than offering discounts to builders, do for the borough? So we've seen it creates a revenue stream. We try and estimate what the economic impact to the borough would be in disposable personal expenditures. Everyone that lives in the apartments, everyone that comes into town to go to Wolfgang's or wherever. And, and it's not an accurate metric by anyone's imagination. But it's, it's somewhere between 74 and $100 million a year, which the current development has brought into this town in personal disposable income. Randy likes it. He always tells me, keep it going, keep it going. But I mean, it has a positive impact on the economy of the town. And we, we see that in all sorts of ways and I won't even elaborate. So pilots form part of a plan to revitalize and reinvigorate the community as a whole. It allows us to add competition without cannibalizing anything. And it creates new sources of revenue to stabilize property taxes. And that's it.
Thank you.
If you've got any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Kevin, we can put the presentation on the website?
Yes.
I know we're still working on trying to get it presented to the folks at home that are watching on YouTube. Does anyone of the council have any questions for Mr. Driver? All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda items, we have number eight, which is as part of the application process for the CDBG grants. We open it up to public discussion. I will read the three grants and we'll open up all three if anyone would like to make any comment. The first one, letter A, Safe and Sound Somerset Mobile Case Management for Housing and Economic Stability. They're seeking $25,000 from CDBG. Jewish Family Service of Somerset, Hunterdon, and Warren Counties. They are looking for a roof replacement. And the Borough of Somerville Playground Project, looking for funds in $150,000 from CDBG. Do I have a motion to open public?
So moved. Second.
Council members, sorry, council members Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat. Yes. Public is open for comment on this item only. Seeing none, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat. Yes. All right, moving on to opening the public meeting for comments on all agenda items and other things. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council members Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat. Yes. Please approach the mic, name and address for the record and address your comments to me. Public session is open.
My name's Dora Del Sorda, 19 Maple Street. I'm an owner. I'm calling, I'm here today petitioning the council to have Maple Street included on the list of streets allowed for residential parking permits. The town parking website states, to quote, "There are certain streets where parking is limited or in high demand. Parking permits have resident, give residents priority to park in available parking spaces." The fact for which I make this petition is that 19 Maple Street does not have a private driveway as it is shared, as it shares a single car driveway with a business next door. In addition, Maple Street is off Main Street and allows parking on only one side of the street, of which more than half is metered. These circumstances are causing hardship on the residents of 19 Maple Street. The streets, the streets currently on the residential permit list are streets whose houses border Somerset Medical Center, Immaculata High School, Somerville Middle School, and the Somerset County complex. The residents on these residential permit streets are given priority parking, yet the majority of these, of the houses they live in have private driveways. The residents of 19 Maple Street border a very busy, busy business district as, as we know, and do not have private parking. There are only two other residences on Maple Street and they have private parking. I ask that you please consider designating Maple Street as a street allowed to have residential parking, as it will only account for a maximum of four cars, of which two would park in the shared driveway during the evening night hours when the next-door business tenants are not there. Thank you so much for your consideration of my petition to lessen the hardship of the residents of 19 Maple Street. I have papers if anybody wants to see them.
I'll tell you to us. I know you had called earlier today and so I received another email. Just so you're aware, is the lots after hours are free. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing no further comments, I move to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat. Yes. We will look into your concern on Maple Street. Certainly when the mayor comes back, we'll discuss that with him as well. But this is something we can certainly look into. Okay, number 10, we have one ordinance for introduction. It's ordinance 03, no, that's not correct, 279, or 2729, pardon me, amending chapter 16650, schedule nine, entitled Stop Intersections to Include Division Street at the intersection of South Street. Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, South Street has the stop signs, we're putting a stop sign on Division?
That's correct. So, so right now, when you reach the post office, there's no stop sign there. Obviously there's bollards, but you are correct. They need to be for all these years, never realizing there's no stop location there.
Yes, yes. So if you're coming, if you're coming down Division, you can go either way, but the, but South Street on both sides, coming from our parking lot or coming off of Bridge, have stop signs.
The stops, South does, yes.
Yes, so now we're putting it on Division.
Correct.
Fantastic.
Is that going to replace the stop signs on South Street or in addition?
This is, I believe this is in addition too.
It'll be a three-way stop.
Correct. So the mayor has made a practice recently of opening up, even though it's an introduction, for comment. So would someone like to make a motion to open up for public comment at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Council members Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vermaat. Yes. Any member of the public have a comment on this introduction? Seeing none, I move to close.
So moved. Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Now, I'd like a motion to introduce this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Council members, sorry. Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. All right, number 11, our consent resolutions. Are there any that need to be pulled from council? Hearing none, we'll take them all together. Number 76, affirming the Somerset County Regional Farmers Market Cooking Vendor Fee and waiving event fee related to cooking and requiring compliance with the established cooking vendor tent and canopy guidelines. 77, awarding a contract to Ben Schaefer Recreation for Playground Installation and Safety Service at Walk Park. 78, authorizing a shared service agreement for engineering and related services with the county of Somerset. 79, advising the Somerset County Commissioners of Municipal Participation in the update of the Somerset County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Number 80, appointing deputy emergency management coordinators Kevin Saluka and Brian O'Neil. 81, approving the use of municipal services for Rolling Thunder Incorporated. Event scheduled on Sunday, May 26th, from approximately noon until 2:00, traveling through Somerville Borough. 82, affirming payment to Desapio Properties in accordance with the parking garage agreement as identified in the body of this resolution and settlement agreement dated June 19th, 2023. 83, requesting to hold redeveloper in default of the redevelopment agreement between the Borough of Somerville and Spartan Urban Renewal LLC for not completing certain tasks in Exhibit 1 of the redevelopment agreement titled Redevelopment Project Schedule. 84, requesting to hold redeveloper in default of the redevelopment agreement between the Borough of Somerville and Somerville Multifamily Urban Renewal LLC for not completing certain tasks in Exhibit 1 of the redevelopment agreement titled Redevelopment Project Schedule. 85, adopting a memorial bench program through the Recreation Department, allowing approved applicants to honor an individual while enhancing the features of public parks. 86, approving legal run-around 5K Run and Fun Walk Thursday, May 23rd, 2024 at 4:00 P.M. 87, authorizing the submission of a Community Development Block Grant Application for $150,000 for the Vanderweer Park Project. 88, canceling uncollected, uncollectible, excuse me, sewer utility charges. And 89, awarding a contract to SJC Lawn Care Incorporated in the total amount of $129,984 for Peters Brook Greenway Tree Planting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Let's get up my bills and vouchers here for a second. There we are. All right, I would, to pay bills and vouchers for this meeting, I move in the amount of $1,036,864.48.
Second.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes. Before we close, again, a reminder, we have the St. Patrick's Day Parade coming this Sunday. An awesome event here in the borough, run by really tremendous people. So, please come out and support the borough and support your neighbors. We look forward to seeing everyone down wearing their festive colors and enjoying themselves. With that, Mr. Mitchell, would you like to take us out?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.